9/7/2016 at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda? Any additions or deletions? I have two I'd like to add, one I'd like to add on under ID, the WRAP program.
No, I'll be okay.
Say WRAP.
I think it's WR.
I'm sorry.
WRAP program. Just I don't see why the recognition assistance program. And from the consent agenda, I'd like to remove the supervisor report. I have an informational report from Edison that I have to read for the residents. Any other additions or deletions, please?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda, removing Jay Supervisor's report from the consent agenda and putting under seven, and also adding nine D.
If you have any questions about the work intended for your property, please call the number on the door card. If a tree poses a serious hazard to power lines or if trimming will put the tree's health at risk, they may need to remove it. They will make every effort to work with property owners before removing any trees once again. And once again, that number is 586-412-3206. And if anybody, like I said, used any other information, they dropped off some other literature, be happy to supply them with that.
Did you say you have map? Yeah, I don't have a map.
They dropped us off just on this one here. That one. So it's actually very little over the township itself. If that's if I'm reading right. The main thing is
Oh, okay.
Is that they will be contacting each property owner individually if they're
Well, it just gives me an idea of where, so, okay, thanks.
I will, if you don't mind, run me through jumping in because I know supervisor report. If you allow them to go on your property and tell them what they can trim and can't trim, if you can be there to watch them, because they did it at my house and they took way more than I agreed to, because we weren't there watching. So if you tell them you can, they can, try and be there to watch them. Because they will, I don't think they did it on purpose, but the same person that signs that paper, it's a different crew that comes in and does the cutting. Make sure you're there to watch them if you can be. Yeah, the field rep will be a different person than the field crew, I'm sure. So I'd make it very specific or mark the trees individually. Something, yeah, as you want. Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, proposed policy manual updates. Attorney Joppick?
Yes, thank you very much. This is, and I have been on the agenda to make some updates or revisions to the personnel policy manual, also containing other policies concerning operations in the township. I've provided the board with a memorandum that summarizes everything because it is a lengthy document and thought that might be easy for the public's purpose. Let me just briefly go through them. And if there are any questions by the board, I'd be happy to answer them along the way or after I conclude. And section 4.1B of the policy, state law requires certain, well, this is a section that covers confidentiality of personnel policies. The prior version indicated that all that information will remain confidential. However, under certain laws of the state of Michigan, it's not always to become confidential, so it may be released. So we made a change to recognize that if required by state law, that the information can be released, just so that clarification is in there and the employees are aware of that fact. Section 4.3, this is one of the sections that has been recently discussed by the township board regarding requirement that employees work 30 hours in order to maintain their medical benefits. Section 4.3 was modified to make the changes discussed by the board regarding paid time off. 4.3K was to address overtime issue that has been discussed by the board as well. Section 6.7, this is just a change that I noticed in terms of what I think was a simple type of graphical error. And the prior version, it needed a heading installed to differentiate two sections. Section 6.7, F and G and 7.2B. The board, in the recent past, as discussed at meetings, issues relating to emergency purchases, purchases that become necessary and that obviously there's no time to pull the board together because it's an emergency scenario and sometimes these things to repair, furnaces and things like that can run into the thousands of dollars. And the prior policy only allowed it up to $1,000, I believe, by the supervisor. This clarifies that the supervisor can approve emergency repairs and expenditures up to $1,000. And two board members can agree outside of having to come to the board for an emergency repair expenditure between $1,000 and $5,000. So that should help provide some flexibility. And I think that's consistent with what the board has discussed previously. So we plugged that in as well, given this opportunity to do these updates. Lastly, there are two sections that are also updates to the policy to incorporate prior policies that were adopted by the board. The first is the Freedom of Information Act policy that was adopted by the board probably about nine months ago. But it was after the date that this overall policy manual was put into place last April. So this is just an opportunity to plug those new updated FOIA policy provisions into this policy manual, so it's consistent with prior board action. The same goes for the addition of section 6.12, which is regarding the credit card payments policy that was adopted by the township board several months ago. And it's just incorporated in. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. For the public, that summarizes and the types of changes that are being implemented. This, of course, is a living document. As the board goes through time, it will update and change things to fit the township and the document is set up to be able to incorporate changes as needed.
I got, I have one question, Steve, on the 6.7. The supervisor can approve up to $1,000 and then two board members from $1,000 to, I don't remember what the amount was, $5,000. My question is, if the supervisor's not available, can two board members approve up to $1,000 if it's less than $1,000? I know that sounds kind of silly, but I mean, if it's in writing, you want to make sure that we can do it without getting in trouble.
Well, the deputy supervisor has the powers of the supervisor in the absence of the supervisor, so my thought would be that's where you're
Okay.
To be covered in that regard.
Perfect. I have a question on 4.3. I still have a problem with this understanding that an employee must work 30 hours to maintain medical benefits. My question is, if that employee doesn't work 30 hours, do we extinguish their medical benefits? And I mean, we sign up for the year for medical benefits. How do we take them away from them? Without, we're not going to call an insurance carrier and say, cancel those medical benefits. That would be, how do you do that? I don't understand.
Yeah, I think, and I don't want to answer for any board members who might have comments on this, but I'll just chime in at the beginning here. This is something that the board has been discussing. And the intent here, I think, is to avoid any sort of abuses of the benefits by using other benefits to subvert achieving a 30-hour work week. So the idea is if, it is not a single week where an employee doesn't get to 30 hours is not going to render them unable to achieve these benefits. But if it's a pattern and established that they're no longer a 30-hour per week employee for whatever reason, then that's when the sort of provision would kick in. There would have to be a certain amount of reasonableness in its implementation.
I agree with you, but it says must work. That's the problem. And I agree with what you're saying. I mean, there should be some leeway there based on a case by case. But according to this, it says they must work 30 hours. I mean, if we have a rain day where guys can't work or something like that, they're not going to get their time in based on a four-day work week. That's the issue I am
And I agree, that's when either the board agrees to pay them or if it's for another reason, they have to use their PTO, their paid time off.
That is true. Still in stating that, though, here comes the argument again. Let's say it is a violation of that week. How do you extinguish their medical benefits throughout the, for that week?
Oh, if I may jump in. I don't think you're going to extinguish them for that week. It's a, I think it's a matter of if
You're going to extinguish them for the year?
Well, if they become something less than a 30-hour per week employee, then they have that issue, right?
Yeah, the intent, I think, is that it's an ongoing issue. Yeah, but it doesn't state Every week they're using, they're just not coming in for a day or every other week and here and there, and it's abusing it. It clearly states that it's made to specify that an employee must work 30 hours. That's my issue. Steve, I'm wondering if maybe, because I do understand what you're saying. I'm wondering if maybe we're to get somehow that the, at the discretion, I don't want to say discretion, somehow that's up to the board. It's the way it should be. Each circumstance could be different for an employee. There's many things that could come up. Illness, things like this or other legitimate reasons, lack of work here. There's too many things to make that specific to that statement.
It sounds like that one needs to be worked on a little bit.
To make it, I don't want to say flexible, but make it so the board can choose not to enforce it?
Well, it should be
We have that authority right now. If we decide that an employee's not doing what they're supposed to, we have the authority to take action against that employee.
It sounds as if
Through a meeting with them and then through our legal counsel to advise us how to proceed.
Would we have to do that anyway, Steve? Would, I mean, if this was an ongoing issue, would we have to follow the steps before we took the medical benefits? Yes, and here's what it actually reads. It's an entire section. But let me get down to the sentences that Supervisor Trombley's talking about. It says, employees receiving medical benefits. Well, first of all, it says employees may not flex their work schedule outside of the established standard work week, except for certain instances of overtime or as approved by the supervisor or township board. So they can flex along if they're approved to do so. Employees receiving medical benefits provided by the township are required to work a minimum of 30 hours in order to keep their medical coverage as an employee benefit. And the idea here is that you have 30-hour per week employees being those that qualify for medical benefits. That's what this provision is saying. It's not saying that if one week you fail to work 30 hours, your medical benefits are going to be revoked. This is saying you are a 30-hour per week. You're required to be a 30-hour per week employee.
I would agree with you, Attorney Joppick, but in that first sentence, it states it clearly. To maintain medical benefits, they must work 30 hours. And I think that's what overrides that other part of it. That specific nature of that statement right there, that language. I think the way we have it now, we haven't covered. I don't know why we have to get specific on that because that, if we're to enforce this, that means when somebody misses 30 hours, it has to be reviewed by this board. Correct. And we'd have to do it, there's got to be a way to do this because at the county, I have to work 40 hours to have my benefits. If I don't work 40 hours, I'm going to lose my benefits. And I guess I would have to get the policy manual there and look into it how they had it worded. But I have to work 40 hours to get medical benefits.
Again, the idea here is that you're a 30-hour per week employee, not that you work every single week 30 hours physically on site. This is saying you have to be a 30-hour per week employee. That's the intent here. And if I can adjust that, I'd be happy too, but I
I think that's my, that's my argument. It says to specify that an employee must work 30 hours to maintain medical benefits. And that includes paid time off, sick time, whatever the township offers.
Actually, it says, it doesn't say must. It says employees receiving medical benefits provided by the township are required to work a minimum of 30 hours in order to keep those benefits, so
I'm reading the first part where it says must.
It's got the
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, we're different. That's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, that the section in the actual policy reads a little bit different. And perhaps if there is concern by the board, employees receiving, perhaps we could adjust it. I think it reads fine as is, but we could, to achieve what the board is trying to do here. But if there is concern, we can certainly make an amendment right now, a modification to what's been provided to the board, such that it reads employees receiving medical benefits provided by the township are required to
Yeah, that's why I have a problem dealing with this on the fly. That's why we had all the policy workshops, because that shouldn't have to be hashed out here all the time. It should be the workshops done, provided, where everybody's on the same page and then done with it.
Couldn't you just put in there that they are a 30-hour work week employee? You know, because that's their status, you know? And that qualifies them for medical coverage. I mean, you don't go week to week. If there's a week where somebody works 29, you're not going to review it. If the next week they work 31.
Well, I think
You know, it's not, it's just to say that their classification as a 30-hour employee is the requirement to get benefits. It's not saying that, oh, if you screw up and only work 28 this week.
No, no, it is. The whole idea when I brought this to the board was that if you only work, if you take a day off, you can't just take a day off and not use your sick time or pay your PTO. My point of this whole thing was, if you take a day off, you must use your PTO. And the other half of that is, if you take Monday off, you don't come in on a Friday to make up those eight hours. You use the, that's what your PTO is for, is to cover that. That's the whole idea, how it's worded. Oh, it's so difficult. And I still agree with your point. Some of the guys that can cause some problem. A guy that hasn't been here a long time, that works for the DPW, say we have multiple rain days, he gets homes sent home to save money. We penalize him by making him use his That was an exception. Well, that needs to be clarified. And we don't want to penalize a guy for us sending him home. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Attorney Joppick.
Well, to Trustee Boyd's point, the last sentence does say if an employee is ill or requests time off during township, the township's working hours, PTO hours must be used. Is that satisfying the present? Can we remove the prior sentence to avoid any confusion as long as that sentence is in there in 4.3B?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that because it's still in there that they, if they're taking the time off, they have to use their time.
Right.
That was my whole thing.
Then if we remove the sentence, just to eliminate any issue about it, we could eliminate the sentence that appears before it, which is the sentence about 30 hours per week.
Well, instead of removing it, replace 30 hours with the classification.
Well, on a quick look, I'm not seeing a classification that specifies
It's not, yes, it's in the, it's in the sub, they're in the sub book.
It's probably in the medical benefits book, is what I'm guessing.
No, there's a classification of employees. There's classifications for every type of employee. And there's one that is full-time, there's 30 hours a week. I'm not sure which classification it is.
And I think you have it there somewhere, Steve, that if they don't have PTO, if it's an employee that doesn't have PTO, that's an exception, including those that haven't earned it yet. If they're a new employee and they have medical benefits, but they don't have enough PTO, that's an exception because it, I remember, it can be approved by their immediate supervisor relieved without paying. And that would I don't have a problem with that because that makes sense, especially if we're trying to save money and it's not affecting that department. If that first wants to take time off and pay and the supervisor authorizes it, then it wouldn't affect By all means, their pay. Yes, sir.
All you got to do is replace the word must with should. And should opens it up immediately to interpretation and then you can decipher whether a guy's being habitual or not and if you're going to take action or not. You just stick the one word out, which should.
I agree with you. I agree with you, but the actual wording doesn't say must. That was just in his memo. It's only in the memo, it's not in the actual words written.
So I have, based on what I'm hearing about an existing classification, another alternative might be to revise that sentence to say employees receiving medical benefits provided by the township are required to be classified as and maintain status are required to be classified and maintain their status as a 30-hour per week or more employee. In order to maintain
Basically, that's what it's saying, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, because that's saying that if less than 30 hours, they have to use their PTO to bring it up to that 30 hours.
And then it's based on the classification of being a 30-hour employee. So now it's turning it to the classification as opposed to how many actual hours you're physically here. You're going to make a misinterpretation of that.
And with that, if we ever decided to be open five days a week, it would fall into it. Using the classification, not
Right.
Any other questions? I make a motion to approve the proposed policy manual updates with the amendment proposed by Attorney Joppick. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Township building exterior light project. Cam isn't here tonight to go over this again. I don't know if anybody wants to wait until he's back. I would suggest it. He's still recovering, he's doing well. Well, he gave a recommendation. Well, fine. I mean, I trust what he, what he gave us. Want to make a motion? Yeah, I was talking to Jody earlier and I think, you know, speak for her, I think we both kind of agreed. We talked at one time about doing one and then the other, but the cost really isn't nearly as much as I thought it was going to be. I'm really thinking doing both at the same time and just be done with it, make the entire lot safe. So I'll make a motion to follow Cam Trombley's recommendation to go with Phillips sign to do the north lot at the cost of $5,391.01 and the west lot at the cost of $7,611.99 with Phillips sign at a total cost of $13,002. Support. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
And the thing with this, it can wait until Cam is back to get implemented and stuff because when I'm going to start it, at least when it's
I think it's definitely the way to go, to get them both done at the same time.
Absolutely.
It'll save you money and get it over with. A and B cleaning contract, additional information, letter C, unfinished business. Deputy Chief Roger.
Good evening. I worked on this last week with Steve. Well, actually Steve worked on it. We went over the revisions to the contract. I sent it to A and B and they got back with me today. And she just had one question about the 45 days for the billing. And I went over that with Ann and she's fine. So I've got a copy of the agreement with the changes for Steve.
I didn't see any problem, you know, in the first one that jumped out at me and they said they're not going to do cleaning on any holiday in one section, which that works. And I don't think that the trip charge and all that is way out of line either.
Any questions regarding the contract? Have I read it correct, this trip charge was $60? Just a flat fee.
Make a motion that we approve the contract with A and B commercial cleaning for the term of March 1st, 2016 through March 1st, 2018 as presented in the contract.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, new business, fire department stations one and two exterior painting project. Letter A, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last week I dropped off paperwork in regards to two separate projects. The first one we'll discuss is the exterior painting project. Neither building has had any painting done on the exterior since either one was built, meaning the overhead doors and the main, and the entry doors going into the apparatus bay. And both are in dire need of this. And when we went through our budget process in-house last, last spring, this was one of the things that we put in the budget, so. So this prices that I've given to you includes both stations. That's just not, that's not a piece, that's both stations. And it'll be my recommendation that we, that if you approve this project, that we award the project to Michigan Specialty Coatings at $3,860. Reason why I'm picking Michigan Specialty Coatings is we have used them before and they're in the next packet we're going to discuss on the floor restoration project. And I can tell you that we can't be any happier on that project. They did a phenomenal job, they're a great company to work with. They were easy to work with, being we're a fire department and our needs. And they're willing to work with us the same way on this, on this painting project. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, if anyone has any.
I'll make a motion to approve the painting of the outside of the fire hall, both fire hall one and two, at the cost of $3,860 with Michigan Specialty Coatings.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Letter B, fire department station, number two, floor restoration project.
On the same line that we did last year, that floor is the original floor. And believe it or not, that building is 17 years old already. And we couldn't even realize that when you start doing, doing a work on things like that. The floor was never properly sealed or received a proper coating on it. Some of that had to do with our finances at the time. We just didn't have a lot of money to go with the best product we could. So Michigan Specialty Coatings, as I just stated, they did the project at station one and everyone here has been in that station since we had it done and have seen the product and the job they did and we're extremely happy. And so at this time, I would request and recommend that the board approves this project and awards the restoration project for station two's floor to Michigan Specialty Coatings in the amount of $21,725.
Okay, I'll be the one to ask, why the big difference for the third one? Any idea?
You got to realize what you're going to get.
Oh, I have no problem with, I'm just wondering if there was, what the difference is.
Yeah. You know, one of the, one of the biggest things I can tell you about the third one is they are a semi-national company, so they have a lot bigger area that they cover. And they have more resources, so maybe they can bid projects. But they would actually be coming out of Ohio. Their sales rep is in Hillman, or not Hillman, Hillsdale. And again, Michigan Specialty Coatings is right up in Marysville. We're very happy with the project. Like I said, you guys all have seen the project, everyone commented on how great it was. And it's held up tremendously, it really has, so.
Well, and the other two are very close. That's what that tells me, that's a more realistic part. I'll make a motion to approve going with Michigan Specialty Coatings at the cost of $21,725 for doing the floors at fire hall station one, no, two.
Station two.
Two. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Ron, just one, one thing I want to point out to the entire body and to the residents. Uh, item number eleven in my monthly report, we assisted the sheriff department last week, we got notified at three-thirty in the morning for a heroin addict missing in the river, in the Salt River, uh, so they called me at three-thirty in the morning and said, Chief, this is what we got, is there any chance that you guys could help us? And because of our training and the equipment that we have purchased over the years with boats and ice rescue, uh, we did assist the sheriff department, we were about, out for about an hour and a half, we did locate the person, um, he, he survived and subsequently was arrested, but, um, so my point is, is that the training that we do, it went right by the numbers, the sheriff guys are just sitting there, they were in awe of how we did things, so, I just wanted to point that out to, to everybody and for, for the cable, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Letter C, TJ Enterprises LLC annual renewal for mining permit. Mr. Piperzak, good evening.
Good evening, yeah, Terry Piperzak, TJ Enterprises, um, here for our annual renewal mining permit. And a little bit I can say is, we still plugging along, did a little better last year, previous years, and looks this, about this year so far, is doing better than last year a little bit, so.
Excellent.
Got any questions, I guess?
How many more years?
I, I don't know. The sooner the better for us, but, it's a hard question. It's gonna be a few more, it's gonna be a few more, probably.
I think it started off at a five-year project, right?
No, I think fifteen. I think so, I don't remember, it was a long time ago.
I think it was like a seven-year project, but nothing kind of made.
No, I know.
Yeah, so, the same sales.
Aboluted.
That's why I just asked that question.
At the planning commission level, we renewed the special land use permit, um, we asked if there were any complaints, we didn't hear of any, um, we went through the figures, we went through, I liked the, um, general area, what it looks like, you know, how everything's coming along, and, um, his brother explained, you know, the difference in contents that we've run into, and what's going on, and we had no other problems or questions, so.
I'll make a motion to renew the annual mining permit for TJ Enterprises, um, what's, I don't know the dates, from when to when. I don't know if anybody's got that. Or just say for one more year?
It's a year.
It's a year, we read it all, so for, for one more year, for another year, not one more, another. Annual, there you go, annual, annual renewal.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Letter D, RAP program. Basically, we're not, we sent this to Attorney Joppick, um, it's not a, it's not an opt-in situation, and Mr. Safe commented on that also, it's just basically them disclosing information, correct, Mr. Joppick?
Yeah, originally, I mean, this is kind of a last-minute thing that the township just learned about last week, I believe it was, and the original material that was sent over to the township just said fill out a survey, and you're opted in, and so we thought, okay, well, that's easy enough, you don't have to agree to anything, you don't have to, you don't have to be committed to anything, so, uh, uh, easy enough, but subsequently, I understand that there's been some, uh, webinars and whatnot, additional information has come out, and in fact, there is a memorandum of agreement, uh, that was discovered today, that the township needs to sign in order to opt in, and, uh, so we've taken a preliminary look at it, I don't want to.
And if I, I could just, if I could just read the project, everybody should understand it, it's, this is the Water Residential Systems Program, it's a universal service delivery model, help residential customers and the Great Lakes Water Authority, the GLWA, um, access bill assistance, uh, water conservation measures, and navigate resources and supports on a pathway towards self-sufficiency. It's where people having trouble with their water bills, basically, in a nutshell. Uh, the duration is entering into this memorandum of agreement effective the month date, two thousand sixteen through the month date year, pertaining to the RAP program, the project operated by the CA Alliance name, and Wayne Metro Community Action Agency is the project administrator, and Mr. Safe, I don't know if you want to comment anything more on this, just to help out people having trouble, correct?
Yeah, good evening, um, thank you, it's basically, yeah, it's a water, uh, uh, it's basically for the residents to get assistance, anybody who's having trouble paying their bills. Uh, so this, this is allocated through the Great Lakes Water Authority, about twenty-five thousand a month, plus, uh, seven hundred per year for any past dues, so the, the total is one thousand dollars for, per household, but they have to, um, apply annually, and, uh, we have to opt in as a first year, and then they will check the bills, uh, they have to stay current, and they have to pay their bills. There are certain requirements, where they get assured, uh, through the memo of understanding, and I, I believe that need to be adopted by the end of the month, for us to opt in, um, so we can kick in the, uh, the RAP program. And basically, after we're, um, as a first-year customer, opt in, then, um, the residents will call directly the authority and set up all that, all those details. Everything is, uh, listed on the website, uh, waynmetro.org, if anybody wants to go and take a look at it. And the number to call is three one three, three eight six, nine seven two seven.
Drew, can you tell one more time, please?
The website is waynmetro.org, and the number is three one three, three eight six, RAP, or nine seven two seven.
Thank you.
But that's after the end of the month, when, uh, the board agrees to the, um, memo of, of understanding, and we opt in through the program, and it will be available for the residents, but there, there are a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent property restriction on it, and I believe there are a couple of other things, uh, if they're a hundred and twenty percent above the average water usage, they'll walk through any, any applicant, there are like a certain, uh, uh, information that they would require, and they will, um, um, walk through every applicant, um, also the household, um, size versus income, but, um, it, it's a good thing, you know, right, if we can help the residents, why not?
Absolutely, I, I have two questions. One, where's the funding come from, is it ever going to fall back on the township? Is it gonna, is there gonna be a cost to us, because of a lot of people sign up, that could be a huge cost eventually, right? I'll go ahead with that one first, if you know the answer.
We thought the same, uh, in the beginning, um, but it, it appears that it's totally funded by the Great Lakes Water Authority, so there is no cost.
And I couldn't find anything that said there was, I just wanted to be sure. And the other thing is, you said that they, well, who, who is the utility builder, is that us?
Yes.
Okay, according to their paperwork, we need to designate somebody that will be responsible for information, including but not limited, limited to confirming payment history, verifying enrollment of other payment plans, alerts, reporting on enrolled rep, client's payment status on a one basement, uh, basis, and that we are on the point of contact for RAP, and that's in their paperwork, correct?
That's correct, Cam and I discussed that last week, and, uh, we tentatively thought it should be me, because I do the water billings, um, the person, the resident applies right with, um, the program, through them, but then there's a web portal that we connect to with them, and I'd have to get with Jody and the I R I T to, to do that, um, and that would allow us to know when they're making their payments, and if they're late, um, and during this time, we're not allowed to shut them off, and there, if there is any outstanding balances, they would be frozen, and I'm glad to say we don't have any residents in that category. Um, so it, we would work with them, but it's not us that would decide who gets approved. Um, there is a lot of criteria that they would have to apply for, and that meeting would be set up with the resident and the RAP committee, and we're not involved in that.
Mr. Safe, in your opinion, you see no negatives with this program, correct?
Absolutely not. It's a good thing.
Yep. Attorney Joppick?
Well, the, the one thing, and again, we just saw this agreement this afternoon, it's the first chance to take a look at it, and, uh, I did have a chance to, so my colleagues represent other communities, and it's being circulated among other communities. One of the things that, um, from a legal side of things, which may be an issue for the township, that we would need to look into is whether, uh, agreeing to freeze arrears and agreeing not to shut off, uh, uh, water, based on this agreement, it would be contrary to any existing ordinances that the township has, and whether we would need to amend those ordinances to rule them and enable this to happen, and that's something we just haven't had enough time to take a look at yet, so, is it a concern or an issue? I don't know, it may be, we have to look at the ordinances and make that determination, and advice on that, obviously, from there. Uh, but can it be done, uh, from a legal standpoint, yes?
Okay, then we, and we can address that as it comes up too, I mean, we can handle that after the fact, we could join in this also.
Yes.
But with that said, if somebody's hurting, I don't have a problem freezing everything and, and all that, but how long do you let it go on?
I think that's part of the program, I'm not familiar enough with it.
It is.
I read like a year or something like that, or something about a year-long period.
It's only a year, and they have to apply annually, um, but I, I believe there, there are two strikes, and they're out. Um, they did discuss about, about this during the webinar of this morning, they will give them a warning the first time around, and the second time around, they're out, but they can reapply the following year.
Okay, and so at that point, and they're out of it, then the arrears come back into play and.
Correct.
That covers, that covers us.
That balance would never go away, it's frozen, it's just delayed.
Right, but if we delay it, if we delay it for ten years.
Yeah, and fifty people are on this, and there, which we don't have nearly that right now, but, things are building around here, you just never know, that could be a lot of money.
Well, it did say that, it, it, they will work, um, to address these things, and one, one of them says freezing the, um, the past dues for twelve months, or until the resident exit from the program. So there are, I think there are some flexibilities, um, into this.
What freezing does is does, it doesn't allow us to add any more penalties and fees to that, so anything that gets added to that just comes right off.
Yes.
And, and one thing I did notice in the agreement, toward the end of that agreement, it, it, um, provides that the agreement can be terminated by either party with thirty days written notice, and it also has a blank space for, um, the period of effectiveness, so apparently that's something that we would discuss with this, uh, organization and agree upon a date, whether it be a year or two years, and plug that in here, uh, we would need to agree upon that, um, so, but in any, even with the date in there, it says it's terminable, the agreement can be terminated on thirty days, there are some current issues, we don't like how it's being run, if it's not monitored, uh, well enough by uh, the, the RAP group that's, that's putting it together, um, you can almost terminate in thirty days.
Okay, so in order to approve this tonight, because it needs to be before the end of this month, we have to choose what that date.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know, I don't know if the presentations on the webinars talked anything about the duration.
Well, actually, Jeanette, when you and I were talking earlier, you said they are extending.
Yes, I was trying to get to that.
Because they know we need to not be able to do this this quick.
Right, you don't have to make the decision tonight, even though the deadline they set is March thirty-first, if we let them know that we are interested in being in the program, but we still have a few more questions, and our board doesn't meet till after that, they will tentatively hold a spot for us. Till after, you know, they know many communities need board's approval, and just doesn't have the time to look at everything.
Yeah, they did say they would like everybody to, you know, opt in by the thirty-first, but they do understand that there are some scheduling conflicts, and they know that, you know, some boards are not meeting within this period, so, they, they will work with us.
I don't see this, this harming us in any way, especially with the thirty-day opt-out.
So would we table this, so we can figure out, do we make a motion to, at the superintendent's office, let them know that we are interested, but we don't have the, that one?
Yeah, that, I mean, it sounds like that's, there are some things to look into, still, to, to take clarification, we don't have a date in this agreement and other information about the agreement, and given opportunity to take a look at the ordinances, so yes, if you, if you postponed it until the next meeting, so that we can gather that information, but express some sort of, you know, on the board's part, as part of the motion, if the board is interested in proceeding with this subject to give these additional items of information.
Okay.
That would probably send a message out against them.
Make a motion, what he said.
I think the quote is so moved. Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer, or Trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Letter ten, public comment. Another public comment at this time. Public comment. Make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-three. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes, giving adjournment.